Thank you all for joining us this evening. And if I could ask Pastor Young come up and give us the invocation, please?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, Maker and Creator of heaven and earth, as we gather today to close of another year, we thank you for your guidance and your blessings upon this city and its council. We ask for your wisdom to continue to lead us as we make decisions for the well-being of our communities. May each member feel your presence and inspire compassion and work towards unity and peace. Help us to serve our residents with integrity and understanding, to embody justice and mercy in all of our actions. Let our efforts reflect your love and may our city prosper in harmony and strength. We pray for the challenges we face, that we might find solutions that will uplift every citizen, strengthen us to work together, to listen, to learn and be the light of hope in our community. We ask this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And Chief, we have the pledge, please. Lucy, if we could have roll call, please?
Here. Louis?
Here.
Amabile?
Here. And the next item is consideration of approval of the consent, consideration approval of the agenda. Recommendation is adopt agenda as submitted. Got a motion and a second for that, please? Ken? Ken?
Mayor, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve agenda as submitted. Any questions or comments? Not hearing any? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Now we have a presentation here. Feel like I should go into a song. But those days are over. Anyway, each month we have Employee of the Month for our city. And we have a lot of very good employees that are working for our city, making sure everything's running very well for our residents. It's my honor today to recognize Employee of the Year for 2024. And Justin, I could tell you if you could come forward, please? He's our Employee of the Year for 2024. Tell you about Justin. He's Assistant Planner for the Community Economic Development Department as for the City of Los Banos. And of course, he's Employee of the Year for 2024. Justin was previously named Employee of the Month for April of this year. And he stepped up to take an additional responsibilities within the Human Resources Department. From March through July 24, Justin went above and beyond and doing payroll processing, showcasing his versatility and his dedication to the city. He exemplifies what it means to be an outstanding city employee, demonstrating not only a willingness to learn, but also the ability to adapt and excel in new and changing challenges and roles. On behalf of the entire City of Los Banos, congratulations, Justin, and thank you for your hard work and dedication to the City of Los Banos. You are an invaluable asset to our team and our community. Here's your recognition. Congratulations. So proud of you. Thank you. You like to say anything? Okay.
I think he wants to take a picture.
Oh, okay. Yeah. We do all the picture stuff. Thank you, Justin. I'd like to thank all city employees. Thank you very much. Okay, now it's time for our public forum. Members of the public may address the city council members on any item of public interest that's within the jurisdiction of our city. And our city council includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action can be taken on non-agenda items. And the speakers are limited to five minutes. Anyone wanting to speak to the city council? Please come forward. Caroline, if you could go to the microphone so we can all hear you. We appreciate it.
I just wanted to say good evening. And then I'm here to follow up because I came last session and asked about the P bid. You were kind enough to give me the name of Stacy Elms, who was exactly the person that I needed to see. We finally met with her this afternoon, just before the meeting. And right now, we're not letting this go. We're continuing and we're asking for a meeting with the new council people and the new mayor. So we will be in contact with.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
I'm Elaine Corey, and I'm here as backup for Carolyn. I also met with Stacy today. We've been asking for transparency where our tax dollars go. And we get the same old garbage, a generic profit and loss from January to August. It is now December. They have a paid accountant. There is no reason why we cannot get a detailed profit and loss listing the check numbers, who was paid, how much and for what. They've got an accounting system. And if they don't know how to run it, I'm more than happy to go over and show her how to print those reports out of there. So we want to meet with you, Mr. Mayor, and any of you council members, and want to know what we can do about this. Those are our dollars. We need to know how and where they're going. That's it.
Thank you very much. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Kathy Ballard. And thank you for the open house. It was nice seeing everybody where I can actually talk to them and not be inside. And now I need to get back to work. I wanted to make a comment on item 7E. I feel with the new mayor and hopefully additions to the council members, I would like to see this item tabled. I honestly don't know if the money is being used wisely or spent and developed. The main thing in a city in talking to people who want to develop here, they don't look at if we have pickleball courts and entertainment. What they look for is schools, disposable income, freeway access and safety for its residents. That should be our goal. We need jobs to like manufacturing or warehouses. So again, I hope that you can hold this item until you get a complete council and can review everything that our city needs. I honestly, if we want our city to grow and to bring in big developers, we have to present more than what we have been showing them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward.
Good evening, Mayor and Council and staff. My name is Plant George, and I live in the downtown area. And I just wanted to let you know that this past week we were able to, volunteers were able to, our volunteer was able to go ahead and trap some cats at the Home Depot. What was so wonderful about that was that the animal shelter came out and helped with education on cats, feral cats in the program. They continue to rise so much within our city and with educating the public. And so I believe, and I will say it again, that they're a premier staff that's all out there. When, when I did go and I did see, I do go to the shelter at times. And I do see the staff also just rotating many animals to be adopted. They have created a resource to reach out to rescues in order to also get them further beyond. What I want to, and I don't know how to say this, but other than to say it, is that in the close future, we really need a project funding for trap and release and educate, and further the trap and release issue that's going on, that the shelter is doing all that they can. But it does also take funding for that. So as you're looking for funding, if those monies can, can be filtered out there, you're even going to see much more progress in it. And I've said this before, but just so you can know that when someone posts anything on social media to reach out to those new residents in our area and our regular residents, there are tens of thousands of people that are responding and are viewing those posts. And the response positively to the shelter really, Mayor, has sped up quite a bit. I mean, there's so much positivity that it's due to a lot of people's work. But they've been working awfully hard for the last two years. And they continue to. So if you can find it in your hearts and those that you're choosing also to sit on the seats that are vacant, if they can be pro animals, cats and dogs, that would be great. Cheer, cheer. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lori Bellotti. I'm a resident of Los Banos. And I wanted to speak because I wanted to clear up some misconceptions about what pickleball does for a community. I disagree with the previous speaker that it's not important for a community to have amenities that brings people together. It is important. And also, people do look to see what amenities they have before they decide to move to a new town. Pickleball is the fastest growing sport in the U.S. and really all over the world. And it, I don't think people really realize how big it is, you know, and how, how much, how quickly it has grown. The main reasons we want pickleball courts is so all residents of Los Banos have the opportunity to play this inexpensive and inclusive sport that is played year-round and by all ages, cultures and socioeconomic groups. Speaking of ages, it is, this is another misconception. It's often assumed that pickleball is a sport mainly for seniors. This couldn't be further from the truth. In fact, the fastest growing group playing pickleball in the U.S. today is people in their twenties. In Los Banos, we have players from ages eight to eighty-seven playing. We have more than one hundred and fifty players now. And there are so many people that don't know about pickleball because they don't really have the opportunity to go play. Most of them work or they're students and they just haven't had the opportunity to go play. Actually, talking about students and kids, last summer, over one hundred kids participated in pickleball clinics, and they loved it in Los Banos. That was in Los Banos. And pickleball is being taught in our Los Banos schools. In fact, one of our high schools has formed a pickleball club, and this was a student-led proposal. We have taught many young people to play pickleball. In fact, one of our high schools, I'm sorry, that was not right. I messed up. We have taught many young people to play pickleball. What we've noticed is that many of the younger people never thought they were good at sports or never had the opportunity to join a team sport in school. These same kids have found they can play pickleball well, and their enthusiasm is contagious. Unfortunately, many of these young people have not been able to continue playing because they haven't had access to public courts. Public courts would be available after work or after school for everyone. Pickleball connects people of all ages in a community. It's truly amazing. Older adults play with young people. Parents and grandparents play with their children and grandchildren. And it becomes a very positive experience for all. I'm always reading articles about pickleball. And this article was, was in the December issue of Psychology Today. And this is what, I'll just read a little of it. "The rapid rise in pickleball participation is due at least in part to the COVID-19 pandemic. When most communities faced closures of schools and universities, bars and restaurants and community fitness centers, many pickleball courts remained open. The sport of pickleball allowed us to bring all of our identities, insecurities and social awkwardness onto the courts and relearn how to truly be with each other. During a time when the nation was suffering and continues to recover from the COVID-19 pandemic and other sources of the social and political divide, the sport of pickleball showed us how to genuinely prioritize the health and safety of others and rebuild community with those we may not have interacted with otherwise." I could go on and on about the benefits of pickleball. I won't. But I just, you know, I'm hoping that you will consider the things that I said. This, the budget was approved for pickleball two and a half years ago. And we've been working with the city since 2019. And so that's, that's five years ago. And hopefully, it finally will become a reality. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sokachak. Good evening, the mayor and the city council. I was not going to speak tonight, but from what Lori would say, that's kind of a, I need to share some of the personal experience. I'm not a native of Los Banos. I moved into Los Banos about six years ago, and I don't know a lot of people. And I'm going to tell the city councils and the mayor tonight about what pickleball has benefited me. As a newcomer, strange to this community, the pickleball community had me involved, and I got to know a lot of people. And this is my personal experience. And anytime I want to take vacation someplace, guess what? I was looking to information about the city. Can I bring my pickleball paddle so I can have a place to play? I tell you what, a lot of cities outside Los Banos do not provide a convenient place to play pickleball like we do here. They charge a lot of money. And even there are times that I want to move out from the city of Los Banos. The first thing that I look for is that what do they have as far as pickleball facility? So yes, it is very important. That's all I want to share my experience about the pickleball community in Los Banos. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Perla Grigno. And I'm also, I would also like to talk in support of the pickleball courts. I know we sound like we're crazy. But pickleball really is life-changing in the best of ways. I am a new, fairly new resident here. Made the big move here from Modesto at the end of this summer. As a new member of the community, I have quickly and quite surprisingly come to fall in love with Los Banos. I love the small town. I love the feel. I love that I can do my errands so quickly. I love that I have been able to begin building my community already. And a large part of that community that I have been built in a very untraditional way has been on the pickleball courts. My husband and I plan to be here a very long time. He's already very invested in the community. He originally told me about the rumors for building the pickleball courts next to the baseball fields, next to Mercy Springs. And I thought the Lord had answered my prayers. Just like Sokachak, I pickleball whenever we go, we travel. We look for pickleball courts. It's actually a huge draw for people in the community. So I've been playing for three years, and I had previously been playing in Modesto. And I have seen what a benefit pickleball courts, as small as they may seem, have for the community. The pickleball club in Modesto initiated building public courts at Crusada Park, just like this pickleball club is doing here. And the benefits to the community have been manifold. It's open year-round, whereas like in here, the baseball field has its limits. A lit pickleball court and the dog park have the potential to be utilized year-round, outside of the rain. Youth on the courts in Modesto, amazing. We're there and the youth are out there. Little, little guys from seniors. It literally services every single age group that we, that we can have. You see young adults, you see families, you see seniors, beginners and seasoned players. Everybody's there. There's no separation. It is extremely inclusive. And that is such a big draw, especially if you're wanting to build community. The other thing that we realized in the Modesto at Crusada is it, it helps the businesses. They actually, businesses, and Gallo being one of the biggest ones, rents the pickleball courts because they're public. They rent them. They use it for corporate team-building exercises. They have tournaments there. Any company can, can reserve a spot through the city in order to have team-building events. And we see that all the time. It would be very frustrating because we didn't have our courts. But that's beside the point. Oh, I'm sorry. So all, okay, the best part, though, is the free pickleball courts. As of right now, again, I've only been here for four months. The, I've gone to the community center, which only has two courts inside. They're packed all the time. I've been at the racquetball club. You gotta pay. The public courts would take away that stigma of the rich play this sport. The equipment is super inexpensive, providing a free place for the children to go. Because as I've heard, the lack of the bowling alley, like there's not enough to do, especially for these kids. And from what I've seen in Modesto, it would just be such a great alternative for them. All that to say, it may seem the pickleball courts are insignificant. But they do draw people in, and they build a community that I really believe, from what I've heard from my husband, this town is trying to endorse. And I think pickleball will help a lot. So that was it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, council? My name is Pastor Oggraniel.
Uh, my name is Pastor Ogranio from Mercy Springs Church. And, uh, first, I wanted to come up here to, um, invite you to, uh, another event that we're gonna be having at our, at our church, Christmas Eve. And everybody's got plans, and that's awesome. But if anyone is interested, we have an amazing service, Christmas Eve night at six o'clock. There's no preaching. It's just candlelight service, song, and scripture. It's bilingual. We do this on purpose because part of, uh, the, the mission for our church is to truly find unity in our community. It's one of the things that drew me. This is a community that has a very high, uh, Hispanic, uh, population. And it is also a very divided community. And if anyone has any questions about the division, I think watching any of the council meetings for the last few years would indicate the divisions that are in our community. But we need to come together, and this gives us an opportunity to do that, to just stop and recognize that we all, we all have one thing in common, this, this thing, this need that we have, whatever it is that we believe in. And we need to come together into unity, into, into community. So I invite everyone to come be a part of this. Like I said, it's bilingual, and it's, it's wonderful short service. But I also want to, um, I wanna kind of change it up a little bit. The amazing woman who spoke earlier is my wife, Perla. And, um, I wanna kind of just re-echo some of the things that she said. I, I had a conversation earlier with, um, Chris. I hope she doesn't mind that I name dropped her here. Chris is really concerned about the complexities of the homeless situation, right? We all know that you can't just throw food at people, or, or a house, or, or money. It's, it's complex. Chief knows anytime he goes out, it could be any number of things that are actually happening. And like everything else in our life, community is complex, every one of us. We all see things from the different perspectives that we're at. And that's fine. There's nothing wrong with it. It's a wonderful thing to, to see the world from where we are at. We also have to recognize that what we see is this small fraction of the fullness of it. And when we come together as a community, when, when we're willing to listen to others and say, okay, your perspective is totally different than mine, I may not agree with it. I don't like pickleball. I want a swimming pool. I want a basketball court. I want a hospital. I want, I want a new person working in this position or this kind of person here. But tho- those reasons aren't necessarily because we're trying to just create animosity, but because of the way we see things and the importance. But it's also important to recognize that we all have these different ideas that need to come together. And if we continue on the path that we've seen, especially here on the council, where all we do is bicker, and it's not big, it has not been about any person being for anything for a long time, but rather it has been about being opposed to something. I'm opposed to you. I'm opposed to you. I'm opposed to you, and I'm opposed to you, or whatever ideas you have. I wanna encourage you to stop being opposed to those who see things differently than you. To stop being opposed to those who you think are your enemies. If you want to find an enemy in a person, you will find them. But if you choose to take the time to listen, to come together, to unite, you can start to make things happen. This pickleball court, I think, is a brilliant idea. I, I've heard, you know, I don't, I don't play pickleball. I, I, I just, I suck. Um, but I see how quickly it is taking off. And my nephews are twenty-five and twenty-one. Perla went to New Mexico, Farmington, New Mexico, a community of forty-five thousand people. Same as Los Banos, they have some amazing pickleball courts. She invited them down there to play. They played their hook. They've now invested in like multi-hundred-dollar paddles. They just came from Florida on a trip to go play pickleball, because this is, really is a big deal. And I get it, that at once, it was thought like, this is the thing for the rich people. You know what? So was basketball, until we actually made a place for them and recognized, all we gotta do is pour a pad, and it's a low-maintenance thing. But the reality is this, like, I'm not a big pickleball guy. I'm gonna play it once in a while because my wife likes it. But it's, it's a low-maintenance, easy thing that attracts a lot of people and, and doesn't, doesn't take up a lot of space. And, and I get that it's on a long list of things that we want, but if we're always fighting, saying, I don't want the pickleball court, I want this first, and just let something happen, then we can move on to the next. Nothing has gotten done because nobody wants to do anything unless their agenda is first. Make room for others. Just let this thing fly and watch. It won't be the end of the world. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello, uh, council mayor. Uh, I'm Tom Bellotti, lifelong resident of Los Banos. First of all, the speaker was just up here. I agree with him a hundred percent on everything that he said. And I'm here to talk a little bit about pickleball, but you heard most of it from my wife, and you might hear some more from some other folks tonight. But I just want to thank the previous council, and with you guys continuing things, and our city ma- city manager there for recognizing pickleball going back a few years now, and also just being very supportive of recreation. It wasn't long ago where our recreation department, Parks and Recreation, was under, uh, Public Works. And they saw the need to bring recreation back and give its own department and get a director like we've got, Mr. Heim over there. It's not just pickleball in Los Banos, but you go from the little ones all the way up to this old ones. There's things going on for everybody. Unfortunately, our city in the past hasn't kept up with things. Little League field that I think is gonna soon be renovated. I played Little League back in that, in the fifties, and it's not much different than it is now. And today, I just got back from playing golf with some of my friends. Had to drive over an hour to get to a golf course. Los Banos with this growth and the number of homes that are going up, we need to provide things for these people to do. They just can't drive back and forth over the hill. Let's get recreation really going in Los Banos. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, my phone's not working.
Please state your name.
Uh, Brad McCray. So, um, first off, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. Um, I'm gonna also be talking about the, uh, the courts. Um, for those of you that don't know me, again, my name is Brad McCray. I teach math at Creekside Junior High. So not only do I know that everything that was set up here about it being taught in their P.E. programs is true, but the kids really do enjoy it. They've come to me in recent, recently, and I wish I had enough time to help the students create that club that they want. But unfortunately, I have a lot of things outside union and things like that, so I don't have the time, unfortunately. But I know that if they had a public place to go, they would use it. And I just want you to know, it builds more than just skill. It's not just a game. It's a bridge between generations. There's people behind me that, sorry, Tom, but twice my age, that I would consider good friends at this point in my life, and there's wisdom there as well. Because not everything that's, we don't just talk about pickleball. I promise, we're not, you know, that's not all we talk about. Sometimes things come up, and there's that sense of community. Young, both young and old, I've seen parents play with their kids, grandparents play with their grandkids. I've gladly walked off the court, even though I didn't want to, just so a grandparent could play with their grandkid who was visiting from college or is only twelve but wants to play. And I also know, like people have been said, there's a strong desire for other things in the community, like they said, pool, basketball courts, things of that nature. I know that it's estimated in the next five years that the sport of pickleball will be in the, about four billion-dollar industry. Tournaments can be held. Like Perla said, community can rent it out for companies. So there is economic growth through a court that can be used to get those other things that we want. So I just want you to know that I think it will benefit our ci- our entire city, not just based economically, but it will also benefit it with just the sense of community that we could gather and how the students want it. The youth wants it too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Greg Hosteller, for the record. I'm here tonight to talk about transparency for one thing. That's the big problem in this city. And I know that Deborah Lewis knows firsthand. She's had that problem for quite some time with this council that was here and mayor. But the other thing I'm gonna talk about is the consent item. On the consent item tonight, I see almost ten million dollars worth of construction to be approved on the consent item with, I'm not sure that this council knows where the money's coming from, because I don't. Because we've been able to find, since last February, we started with PRA's trying to find the money. And one of the councilmen said that I didn't, former councilman, said that I didn't complete Vineyard Drive. And I didn't, because I wasn't responsible, because the city collected a special fee to connect it. Since nineteen ninety-eight, an end development agreement. That account, after over thousands of houses were built out there, today shows, based on a document from the Los Banos PRA, Public Records Act, is minus eight hundred and fifty-six dollars, five hundred and three dollars and thirty-two cents. And that connection to the highway has still not been completed. Where's the money? I've been asking about this all year, not gotten any answers. You know, another thing, you're talking about Public Records Act. We submitted a Public Record Act, or the lawyers did, November fifteenth, asking about a staff member's pay. After ten days, they sent us a letter that says, we need fifteen more days. On the twenty-fifth day, they sent us a reply that part of it was redacted. And I don't know why that would be, but it was. An employee makes about three hundred and fifteen thousand out the door. I called my office, and I asked them, hey, how much does Joel Silva cost us per year? Thirty-three seconds, I had the answer. I called H.R. When I move along with that, I like the pickleball subject. I think a pickleball court should be built at least every other park, if not maybe more. I think they'd be centrally located. I think we're just going now, or scheduled to go under the bid I see tonight, about one point five, one point six, and another nine hundred thousand for shade. Now, the shade I don't really agree with tonight, unless I'm educated further about that, because I don't know of any other sport that we play in this city or this valley that has shade. But I may be educated, learn more about that. I don't like the location because I farm up wind from that, and that's gonna cause problems for the people playing pickleball in the heat. We were farming almonds. I think they should be centrally located so people can walk to them. Maybe like in the future building, construction of the Shaughnessy Park in College Grains and the future parks on this side of town, if they ever get to that. The city, as you may know, hasn't bought the land yet for that park. And the land was set aside five years ago, and the money was collected well over three years ago, and construction hasn't started because city manager hasn't taken upon himself to get things done. I'm gonna move past that. This community has been suffering from things he does and doesn't do. You have enough information for you, and you should, and if you don't know it, because I think you do. For instance, a lady talked here that works at City Hall, part of the union for the police and fire, possibly. After her speaking, her desk was moved by the toilet in the hallway, under the orders of Josh right here. And there's a lot of things he's done. There's this city taking on a lot of liability for it. And this last election was and is the mandate for this council to take action. And I believe the best thing you can do for this welfare of this community is to place him on administrative leave and investigate, where's the money? Why are these accounts? Where's the money at? Why aren't the parks built? You collected over twenty million dollars in the last ten years. Our company has paid thirteen million of that money and not built one park. Where is the money? That's just part of it. Is there embellishment going on? I don't know. I wanna know where you guys think the money is to pay for all this stuff on the consent item. And the other thing, talking about a twelve-million-dollar park in Colorado next to the airport so another plane can crash there and kill people? He supports it. I think we need a new city manager. That's what I think about that. Bill Vaughn, I'm surprised that you're a watch. You've allowed any of this to go on.
Sorry.
I can tell if I was city attorney, which I am not an attorney, I would resign from the job and put up with this self-poll act of how these city employees and stakeholders have been treated, amen.
Anyone else like to speak? Come forward.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and, uh, folks in the audience. It's a real, uh, pleasure and honor to be able to come up here and speak openly to you in the course of government and in, in your decisions that you make. We don't always get to do it with, without other biases coming in, and so if you don't mind, I'd like to take a, a nice, slow, deep breath right now before I get started, if you don't mind. So please, join with me if you'd like. So, um, all I, all I'm here to talk about, uh, today is, um, the, is the point of change where we find ourselves now. We have a lot of rebuilding to do, um, for a variety, a great variety of things. One of the things that comes to my mind, immense, uh, just immediately is, uh, the fifty or so years that I've spent, uh, as an officer of the Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. Um, we wanna thank you for the city's cooperation and assistance in conducting the many functions, like, like last week's, uh, Christmas parade, which, uh, you supported, and we are very grateful for that. Um, and the chamber's been doing, uh, having activities like that, and, uh, makes us able to say, as compatriots, Merry Christmas and thank you. So here we are, uh, event after event, and the Chamber of Commerce is actively, eagerly stepping forward to, to continue originating these events and trying to raise, uh, some operating funds in the process. Unfortunately, it's very tough today to do so. And, um, we, we've actually stepped forward to, to assist as partners with the Downtown Association, uh, realizing that they're funded through tax dollars and, and, uh, their membership in the P-Bid, uh, program. The chamber's never enjoyed those things, and nor, nor have they ever enjoyed the opportunity to have members of city councils sit on their boards or, uh, sit as assistants to help, help, uh, focusing funds, uh, on their activities. It's always been funds we've generated on our own. And, um, uh, we have enjoyed the contract relationship we've had with the city for all those decades. Um, and the first organization that ever promoted pavement on Pacheco Boulevard going through Los Banos, all the way to Highway ninety-nine. Um, unfortunately, uh, we need more assistance. And we need to return to the times when we leveraged the activities we had, that we generated, to, to generate transient occupancy tax for the community. And we were given some percentage of the transient occupancy tax to keep us, keep us afloat. And it was very effective, and it was leverage. The more people we brought into town under that contract, the more transient occupancy tax was generated, and the more they could help support the cha- the chamber in return. We'd like to return to those days. We'd like to, what I'd like very much to do is to, um, initiate, re-initiate contractual discussions between the city and the Economic Development Commission of the city, or however we can do it, to have some, uh, discussions about how we can work harder to generate more transient occupancy tax and gain in the long run, through that leverage, a little bit more support for finance, other than our own fundraising efforts. Uh, and so with that, I'd, I'd like to, to thank you very much. And, and, uh, I look forward to an opportunity for our board people to, to be able to sit down and discuss with you or the city representatives or the finance officer, um, how we can get back into a, a real, uh, we could review our contract, which is very alive, um, and, uh, fill in that one blank spot that says there's some compensation for what you're doing. So I appreciate that very much. Thank you all again. And, and again, thank you for your support for the events that we do. We're really proud of them. We're glad to help the City Downtown Association like we do. We're glad to help the Downtown Association like we do, very regularly. Just like to be sure that we can continue doing it in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please come forward. You're welcome. Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone coming forward, I will go ahead and close the public forum and move on to consideration approval of the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and may be voted on one motion. And I think I would, before I open it to the council, I want to... Yes, Lucy, go ahead and read off everything that's on the consent agenda, please.
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers two four eight eight three oh through two four nine zero five five in the amount of two million, seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Minutes for the December fourth, two thousand twenty-four city council meeting. City Council Resolution Number six eight six one, authorizing the city manager to execute the grant agreement with the Merced County Association of Governments for the Regional Early Action Planning two-point-oh grant, and amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget to increase appropriations for revenues in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. City Council Resolution Number six eight six two, accepting the police facility project located at eleven eleven G Street as complete, and authorizing the filing of a notice of completion with the Merced County Recorder. City Council Resolution Number six eight six three, authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with Frontline General Engineering, Inc., for the construction of Pickleball Courts Project, and amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget, increasing the appropriation amount in the Park Development Fund Account, two five oh four five four two two oh seven two oh, in the amount of three hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars, for the total project amount of two million, five hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars. City Council Resolution Number six eight six four, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with AG Construction for the Ortega Lita Road and Pioneer, Pioneer Road Signalization and Traffic Flow Improvements in the amount of six million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and amend the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five budget by increasing appropriations in the Public Works Capital Improvement Plan, Account Number two two nine four three oh two two oh seven one six, in the amount of four million, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any questions from the council on this? I think I'd like to go ahead and pull off item E and F for further discussion. And, see, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to pull items C and D for discussion.
Okay. Ken, do you have anything? Okay, so let's start with item C. Ms. Lewis, what questions do you have on?
Thank you. First, I'd, I'd like Mrs. Elms to just give the public a bit of background concerning this item on the agenda, and then I'll present my question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. This particular item is for the authorization to accept a REAP two-point-oh grant from the Merced County Association of Governments. This particular funding would be used to reimburse the city for our costs to update our community development standards. This funding is state funding, Regional Early Action Planning is designed to assist local jurisdictions in supporting their planning efforts that advance housing production, economic development, and sustainable community growth. MCAG had a notice of funding availability that they published for the REAP Local Suballocation Grant Program. So, MCAG was allocated funds from the state of California for REAP two-point-oh, and then from that, they created a Local Suballocation Grant Program, which is a direct allocation as long, to the jurisdictions of the county, as long as we met the eligibility criteria. So, the city of Los Manos applied. Our activity, like I said, was for the community development standards, which did meet the eligibility criteria in that it will help streamline housing within our community. The grant amount is for a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. This would, like I said, be a reimbursement to the city. Our total contract with Mark Thomas for the community development standards update is three hundred and seventy-five thousand and ninety-two dollars. So, we will be able to offset that by this grant with the hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars that the city would be receiving.
And, and thank you for that report. My one question is, is this going to be the full cost of the update of our development standards from, or is there going to be more cost to come?
No, so this grant will only help offset, we're already in contract, we're already budgeted, but the total amount for our community development standards is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and ninety, excuse me, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, ninety-two dollars. So, this will help offset what the city is already budgeting for. The remaining portion is to, no, I put, to date, we have been billed two hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. So, we will be able to use the grant to reimburse the city for the costs that we've already been billed for.
So, the three hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five thousand, ninety-two is what the total cost is, and are we to expect any more billing from Mark Thomas's company for their services?
Right, so to date, we've been billed two hundred and nine thousand dollars, two hundred and nine, five hundred and twenty dollars. So, we still have the remaining of the contract that we will be billed for. This grant will help reimburse the city for the funds that we've already been billed for.
And I understand that. What I see is the total amount of the cost was three hundred and seventy-five thousand. We have money coming from MCAG, from the RIF fund, and then we have a portion that we have to pay. Is that going to take care of the bill for this particular project?
Okay, so...
Are we talking different things?
Yes. So, the remaining balance on the contract, which is still work that needs to be completed, is a hundred and sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-two dollars. That's the remaining work to be completed by Mark Thomas. What the city, though, is going to use the hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight dollars is for the work that has already been done, under the, the, the work that's already been billed for. We're going to reimburse the city for what we've already been billed for, because we are eligible under this grant to begin, starting as soon as April third, twenty twenty-three. Okay, so after, no, we are only in contract with Mark Thomas for three hundred and seventy-five thousand, ninety-two dollars.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Yes.
All right, and I understand the rest of the figures. So, thank you for giving that update, and, Mayor, I'm hoping at some point, these standards are going to be brought to the council so that we know what the updates are going to be for our city.
Thank you. Any questions on item D? C?
So, item D. The only question that I have on that is, under fiscal impact on the last paragraph, it indicates that I Bank, once these documents have been submitted to the county, they're holding approximately seven hundred thousand dollars as required for the covenant agreement.
Yes, so...
And so, what I want to know is, once that money comes back, does that go back to the police department in their budget?
Well, again, so, so, so the budget is a different thing, so their appropriations are their appropriations. The cash that comes in will go back to the general fund, which had X amount of dollars that it, it contributed to, to this. So, the, the cash that has been used for the purpose of construction was a variety of, of areas that we used. We used general fund, we had a debt financing, we, we used some Measure P, and we used some of the facilities funds, the developer impact fees. So, when this money comes back, there'll be a, we'll be closing out the, the fund itself, the, that accounted for the construction of, of the PD, and any, any funds that were, that are coming in will then get distributed. Most of it will get distributed to the general fund. There'll be a, a small percentage that will get deposited back into the police developer impact fund.
Okay, but we don't know what that breakdown is at this point?
Um, I don't know that breakdown exa, I think it's, there's about, I think it's twenty-three percent, twenty-three point eight percent of that will go back to the developer impact fund, the remaining will go back to general fund.
And you said that we had debt financing. Has that been paid off?
No, we just started that. So, fourteen million dollars was, was the debt financing for I Bank. It has an interest rate of about roughly two percent. There, it's a thirty-year amortization of which the, the debt service will be paid out of Measure P, the facilities portion of Measure P.
All right, thank you. That was the question I had.
So, before we move on to item E and D, Chief, you have anything to add? Before we, okay. I think go ahead and vote on item A. Check register two four eight eight three zero to two four nine zero five five, the amount of two million, two million, seven hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents, and the minutes from December fourth, two thousand twenty-four, for that council meeting. If I could have that motion, please.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for item, I think you're saying item A?
And B.
B.
Yes. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, we'll move on to item C, which is the Council Resolution six eight six one, and that's the REAP funding. Any further questions on this one? If we could have a motion, please?
I'm sorry, what item are you...
We're on C now?
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Lambert. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve City Council Resolution six eight six one. Any comments? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Item D, City Council Resolution six eight six two, which is the authorization filing notice of completion of our police facility. Any further questions on that one? And if we could have a motion, please?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item seven D on the agenda as submitted.
A motion and a second for item seven D. Any further questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Move on to item E, and we'll start, this is the authorization to execute a contract. This is the pickleball courts, and Joe, I'll turn it over to you, you can talk about that.
Good evening, Mr. Aaron, City Council. The project itself, as laid out in the staff report, it's nine pickleball courts that will be constructed at the Ag Sports Complex. This has been a several-year-long project. It's initiated with some early public comments, went into the Park Master Plan process, where we identified it during that time. We did look at several locations, including Crest Hills Park, and several other locations throughout town. Things like noise were factors, things like parking, restroom access, those sorts of amenities were all considered. Ultimately, Ag Sports Complex became a, the preferred location, and on February seventh, twenty twenty-four, we brought that to City Council to pursue the design of those courts, which brings us to here. Ag Sports Complex itself is intended to be a regional sports complex. It has two softball fields on site, a dog park, a fairly brand-new restroom, only about two years now, horseshoe pits, and the city's largest playground. So, it's very much, you know, what I would call a destination location in terms of amenities. We, you know, we expect the community to drive to the dog park or the softball field. There's also a large undeveloped lands, landfill space that'll be going through closure processes on the public works end, that may end up being developed at some point as well. In terms of the courts themselves, I did attach the initial concept to the back of the staff report. It shows the fields going in, or the courts going in between the dog park and the north softball field. That concept is not perfect to the final. There was a PG&E vault that creates kind of a middle gap, but we didn't think it was necessary to pay for an additional colored concept to update that. The same nine-court layout is, is, is the same as what you'll end up having from this project, but I wanted to include that as a reference for what you're going to see. I mean, what you're going to see is access from that, that parking lot there. Again, between the dog park and the, the sports field there, there is an existing raised planter that has a couple, I think, three picnic tables that'll oversee the front few courts, as well as benches throughout. There's kind of a central sidewalk space, and we expect that to be very important in terms of developing social groups. Pickleball itself is a sport that I think goes very much beyond the sport itself in terms of the, the social group that we expect to be developed out there. It's obviously already been a large group in town here, and we only expect it to grow larger, especially amongst the, the younger age groups. That's something that we especially expect to see. And I expect to see the park itself get a big boost from it. The dog park, for example, really was that first step in that direction for that park out there. I know when I first began, it was a pretty rundown location out there. We've recently approved some field improvements out there, and I just noticed, you know, even with the dog park, people are riding their bikes to the park, and people are traveling as a family, and so, I expect the same to be the, the case for the pickleball courts. And then there's some alternate bid items as far as this construction goes. There's the base bid, which goes into just under one point six million. There are also alternate bid items. Those bid items can be, for lack of a better word, selected to be added on to the contract for the construction of those courts. That includes shade structures that'll be going down the middle of those courts to help facilitate use there, as well as site electrical for the pole lights and associated wiring for that. And so, those items can be selected, or we can move forward the base bid. And then in terms of other expenses that we expect, of course, we expect some contingency costs, there will be some PG&E-related expenses, and then just your standard construction-related expenses such as compaction testing. Do you have any questions? I'm here to answer.
Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I didn't get a rendition, a schematic for a concept plan in my packet, although I do have the Planning Commission packet, and there were several concepts in there that are different. And when I made a comparison to what is in our packet with City Council versus what was in the packet for the Planning Commission, there were three shade sales in the Planning Commission, and in the budget for City Council here, there's an alternative bid adding another sale. sale. There is, you know, as a project design, I saw three gates in there. There was one mentioned in the plan. Under furnishings, there are 10 benches that I was able to figure out, and six picnic tables. Under the plantings and irrigation, there were eight trees and 370 plants. And there were 36 lighting poles. And, and there were, you know, several other things, you know, that I had pointed out here, but my concern is that we have an ARPA budget of 2,200,000. And that's what we agreed to build this park with. And now we're asking to expend additional monies and take it out of park, out of the budget for, what is it, housing, the, the budget, I think it's the budget.
Park Development Fund.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. So, I, I'm really, I'm just really concerned about the total cost of this. And again, you know, we had agreed on a certain dollar amount, and I, I'd like to see us stick to that. We've also historically, when the Planning Commission has approved something, the City Council also gets to see the final concept or what the concept is that's being looked at. What we have in this packet is just a few pages, and we're asked to spend millions of dollars, you know, thousands of dollars more. So, as a legislative body here, I think we should be able to see what we're going to agree to spend on and what the, the final count is. What, what, what are we actually going to approve? And, and I'm a bit confused because what the Planning Commission approved and what is in our packet tonight, there seems to be some items that are contrary to each other. So, I, I would like to make, you know, I would like to say this should be brought back to council, and to be very specific about what it is that you're asking for, to show us the concept of what is going to be, who is doing the landscaping. I don't know who the landscaper is. I don't know who's building this project out. I don't know anything. I'm just asked to give money and not know what I'm, you know, I know that it's for a project, but I don't know who all is involved in this project. So, you know, I, I went a little bit deeper in the woods and looked at, you know, the, some of the trees that are being planted, and one is, I think is a coastal oak, oak tree, which is a tree that grows very, very large, has a very large trunk. And what I saw on the internet, they have limbs that will bow down to the ground and actually touch the ground. And I know there are some oak trees in California. I don't know if there are all of them, but there are some varieties of oak trees that you are not allowed to prune and cut. So, I'm, I'm just a bit concerned about this, this whole concept that's being presented to us tonight, and I, I would like to know some of those questions, like who's building it, and who the landscaper is? Is the landscaper the one that's giving us the concept, or is it the builder of the, the whole park that's going to be doing the landscaping? I, I don't know these things. So, again, I, I'm just asking that it would be brought back, and some of these areas be cleared up, and that we stick to the budget that we agreed to allow for this pickleball court. And I, I don't know how it got this expensive, but it's, it's, you know, way over, over the budget that we approved. Thank you, Mayor.
Joe, just one second. Can we approve this without your bid alternates?
Yes, so those can be selected. You can select the shade, or you can select the lighting, or whatever you would like. The base bid is 1.591381. Just to answer some of the questions, the concept I attached is just the conceptual design that was previously brought to council. What is in the plans is, I don't, we don't typically include those in our council packets, but we can certainly do that in the future. But in terms of any questions, I can certainly answer those. In terms of who's constructing it, we had one bidder, Frontline General Engineering Construction Incorporated, and they'll be doing all the work on site in terms of landscaping, concrete, any other associated work.
So if there's any concerns on any of the planting or anything like that, can you take care of that, make sure the right plants are?
Yes, certainly if there's comments from council, or it's also something that we can evaluate, and that can be resolved by change order throughout the process.
So, the, the base bid, basically 1.6 with the last, that's with the ARPA funds? That's within, the last city councils agreed to, right?
Yes, so we wouldn't need any additional funding for that. We were allocated 2.2. Again, we would want to make sure we'd have some contingency funding available, but that's already in the budget, so.
Okay. Ken?
Yeah, uh, Haima.
The base, base, what does that actually include? Tell me what's, what's left out on that base plan?
Yeah, absolutely. The base bid is the full construction of the courts and the facility itself. It does not include shade, the shade structures that, that run through the middle of the facility, as well as the light poles. Again, those can be, you can select the shade without the lighting, or the lighting without the shade, whatever.
So if we did without the shade, what would, what would it be with the lighting?
So, without the shade, I don't have a total number here, but it's, you know, the shade structure is, there's one that's just over 50,000, one that's just over 50, two that are over 50,000 there, and then 65,000, and then just one just over 82,000. The total for those, all of it, would be $758,045.81 for all of the bid alts. $508,748.05 of that is related to the lighting.
So where'd I put this on with 2.2?
So, without, if you wanted to do just the shade as well as the base bid, it looks like that adds about 250,000 to the 1.6. That would still keep us underneath the 2.2. I think any inclusion of the lighting would put us over that.
Just, no, I'd rather do, I'd rather have the light, this is what's going to happen. You got, everybody already sees what Trump's, or President Trump is going to plan it on. He wants to do away with the daylight savings time. So what is that going to do? So it's going to have an issue for later. So later down the road, if we do, if we go without lighting or anything right now, it's just going to cost us 10 times more when we try to add it later down the road. I, I, I feel we're going to get the better buck for our deal now than we are later down the road.
Yes, so typically, we do expect, if we, we were to do, say, lighting down the line, we do expect those construction costs related to that to be more expensive, both in the sense of the lighting costs themselves, as well as remobilization for, for construction.
But I think without the shade, I, I'm okay without the shade, because I mean, if nothing else, we can bring in awnings if they have to set up if we're, you know, smaller, you know, if we have, you know.
For sure. If, if you, if council decides to select the lighting without the shade with the base bid, that's going to be 2.1 million and $129.39. I would still suggest some level of amendment using the Park Development Fund to have contingency of funding available. Again, that, that prevents us from having to pause construction and, and come to council.
Well, I, I'm looking for, you know, I feel, because if we need to wait another year or two down the road, it, it's going to be 10 times the cost we're going to get now. It's called inflation, it happens. So I can do without the shade, but is that something that we could put in, or is that, do we still have to, where we have to come back later to add just the lighting? Right now, we're just going to pass the base plan, correct?
It's up to the, it's up to the motion to approve just the base, just the base and lighting, or base and shade, or continue, or... So I just want to remind everybody, since there's only three of us up here, this takes three votes to pass. So it's, since it's a resolution.
I also want to remind that these funds have to be spent by two years from the end of this year. 2026 is, is that these have to all be spent. Just, just full disclosure on, on the ARPA funds.
And I, I did look up the ARPA funds, which is the American Rescue Plan Act, that's the COVID-19 funding. And it can be used for infrastructure projects that support public health. So, Ms. Lewis?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm, I'm still going to stand with the base price, that the base grant that we gave through the ARPA money for the 2, 2,200,000. Lighting, I think maybe we can look at in the future. Right now, there, there are a lot of companies out there that are developing solar lighting. I saw some at the League of Cities. I don't know where they are right now as far as court lighting. I did a little research online. There are companies who have developed court lighting for basketball and for other types of courts, so that might be something that we could look at in the future for this particular project, rather than the consistent putting down of paying PG&E and having another electricity bill on the back of, of the city. I just think we need to start thinking out of the box a little bit, rather than just jumping in and saying, we've got to do this now, no matter what. We approved a base price with base product for this project. I think it's adequate. They're, they're getting quite, the, the pickleball community is getting quite a bit just on what we're giving, this, this council is looking at in the base price. But the, the sales and the electricity, I think is something that we can wait and look to in the future. You know, we, we don't even know where we are financially in the city right now, and we're asked to expend more money out of the budget without knowing where we sit financially. So I'm just not feeling secure to do this. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask that we stick to the base price right now and in the future look to the other items.
So your feeling is you would be in favor of going with the base right at this time without the lighting?
Without the lighting and the sales, and we can look at that futuristically. And as I said, I think lighting for courts in the solar aspect is coming. It, it may be something new in the future. I've seen it even for cities. The, the site that I went to at the League of Cities, they were promoting street lighting for cities, and we have a lot of old communities here in Los Angeles that don't even have sufficient street lighting that we can, you know, work on for our, the residents in those communities. But at this particular time, I think we need to stick to the base and move forward with the pickleball courts, eliminate the shades and the lighting, and we can look at that at the future without going and having our, the ground dug up and putting down PG&E lines. I think solar is coming, and it's coming fast, and in the long run, it's going to cost us less. It may cost us a little bit more upfront, or maybe less than PG&E, and paying a PG&E bill every month for the courts while they're being used. So, that's, that's my feeling on it.
Ken, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, did, did we get those options when they did the bid for solar? And, and another quick question. Can you shut solar off? Can you shut solar off?
Yes, my, it probably depends on the, the company, but there's, there's different timers and sensors that you can put on a solar light. We've utilized solar throughout our parks. The main reason that we didn't look at it at this park, particular location, is the, the initial cost of solar lights is substantially more in terms of getting those per, per pole. But it's certainly absolutely something that we can look at down the line. We can look at cheaper LED options as far as electric down the line as well. I think, I don't expect the cost for light poles to go, to go down, but it's, I, I think as Councilmember Lewis brought up, it's something that we can think outside the box, and we can try to continue to investigate that if that's the direction of council. But, but from my experience, I would say that it is cheaper to do it today. That being said, absolutely, we can, we can look into that and make a plan for that.
Well, I can see where that's not where we're going to be going tonight anyway. But I, I mean, I, I don't want to slow down the, the process of getting these pickleball courts, because people, it is the fastest-growing sport. I mean, watch the NFL channel. Every commercial, pickleball, kids, grownups, elders. So, this is something that people will look towards our town to see what kind of amenities that we do have. So the lights, you know, I, I can see we're going to end up paying more for it down the road, because we're going to end up waiting another year, so it's probably going to be paid more. So, but I feel, but it's not going to happen tonight. But I do move forward with the.
Uh, yes.
The base.
And I, I did want to.
I know it's all about saving money always up here, but hey, pay more in a couple of years, I'm okay.
I did, for a moment, just wanted to bring up that if we did not include the lighting, but did include the, the shade structures, then we would still be underneath the 2.2. The amount would come out to 1,600,744.188. That's with those, those four shade structure types included. So that would still leave us enough room with the contingency of 10% included in there, so.
I, I got one more thing. Once we get these fields built, get the shade, it's also going to cost more to come back in to have those, when we do decide to put those poles in, because now we're going to have to tear up concrete. We're going to have to tear up certain things, get the lines through. So now our price goes up again. Thank you, Ms. Haima.
Thank you. So, Ms. Lewis?
I have nothing.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, it sort of sounds like we need three votes to move this forward. This group has come before previous councils five years ago, so that's two councils ago, I guess. And then the last city council. I'd like to see this move forward. And so, if we could have a motion to go forward with the engineer, the Frontline General Engineering accepting their bid for 1,591,381.34, this would be amending Resolution 6863. What else do I have to say, Bill?
One thing, can we add the shades in that if we're going to fall in behind, underneath?
Yeah, we just need three votes, just remember that. But you can.
We're falling under.
Yeah. Ms. Lewis, how do you feel about the shades?
I, I, I really want to stick to the budget right now, and if.
Okay.
Let me, let me get back to what Mr. Haima said and verify this, because the base, the base construction is 1,591,381.34, correct?
Yes, and I apologize, I had given an incorrect number earlier. With the shade, it would be 1.8 of, 1,840,679.10. We do still anticipate that to keep us underneath the total 2.2 million available. Apologize for that.
So we're still under budget?
Yes, even with 10%, it's just over 2 million.
So, what do you, because you have a bid alternative here, and that's what I don't know. In the original, the, the concept that was presented to Planning Commission asked for three shades, and in this bid concept that you have in the City Council, you're asking for four. So what is it that you're giving me a number on?
Yeah, the, the four types of shade structures. Again, the concept wasn't updated from the initial council meeting. That would have been a substantial cost to update the, the cost, so I didn't include that. As it is listed in the actual engineering specs, the engineering plans, it's the four types of shade structures.
Okay, so on the Planning Commission concept, the color rendition that I have from the Planning Commission packet, there are three shades in the middle of the concept. Where is this fourth shade going to be placed?
Again, that's an original concept. I, I didn't have them update that. In the engineering plans is where they, they list the fourth one. There is a center aisle, because we had to run an electrical line. There's a, a PG&E vault that powers the light pole out there for the ball fields, and so we had to make space for rerouting of that line under, underneath. So there's a little center space there, and the shade structures are, are there. But running down the middle aisle.
Is there a court there?
No, it's not over the court space.
So we don't need a shade structure for PG&E?
No, the PG&E, what I'm trying to say is that that created a little extra sidewalk in the middle of the, the, the top four courts and the, the most southern four courts. in the middle of the, the top four courts and the most southern four courts, and so that's what's gonna be different from that original concept.
Okay, so there's a lot of ways we can handle this. We can approve the original bid of the 1,591 for the contractor, and we can come back and add the shade now, add electrical now, or come back to another date and add those. If we make a motion for the shades and electrical and it gets denied, then there's a time period we cannot bring it back to the council. I'm not sure exactly how long that is, Bill. You know how that...
In order to reconsider a denied motion, there's a, I believe there's a 120-day waiting period unless the person voting against it brings it back. So, potentially, you could divide this up into a number of different ways that you have support for tonight. If it's B1, B2, B3, B4, one of them, all of them, I would suggest you only go forward with the ones that you have support for tonight.
Thank you, Bill. So, I think we have support for the initial cost of the courts. So, we have...
Mayor, if you could just give me a chance so I can do some addition here.
Yeah, sure.
Structure, B1 shade structure, one, B2, B3, are those just, is that three different structures types?
Yes.
Is that the cost for all three?
So, each one is its own standalone bid alt item, so they can be selected. They, again, run down that middle aisle, similar to what the concept shows. There is a fourth one. I guess farthest north would be kind of the location of it. And again, those can be selected or not selected.
Okay, so, oh, right, so...
There's slight differences based on...
Structure, structure type one, that's, so each structure is actually a different structure, each one?
There's slightly different dimensions to them based off of the available space.
But if we went with shade structure one with all four of them, it doesn't work that way, right?
You would either choose one, two, three, four, or all four.
Okay, okay, gotcha, gotcha. Well, if we went with B1, two, and three, that's the ones, yeah, so that keeps us... Well, if we pick off four, then we're still under the... I mean, at least we're giving, we're giving something.
So, Mayor?
Okay, Ms. Lewis?
Yes. So, from the figures that I have for the three structures, the shade structures, the fourth one is to cover some PG&E thing, as I understand. I don't see that as a necessity. So, with the three structures, that comes to 166,490 dollars and 28 cents, and bringing it to 1,757,871 and 62, which is within the budget. And, and I will, I will go for that. But I, I don't see the necessity for the fourth shade structure.
Mr. Lambert, are you okay with that?
So, show me where that's, on that diagram that they sent us.
Just to clarify, it's not covering the PG&E vault. It's, there was a gap between the north and the south courts that had to be put in to allow for rerouting based off of the PG&E vault. But, but yeah, certainly, the first three shade structures could be selected without the fourth one, but they all just kind of cover that middle aisle there in different intervals.
Are you talking about that walkway that's right there in the center that's going over to the other standalone pickleball court?
So, there is a center sidewalk. There's just a center sidewalk that divides the two sets of four courts, and that's, again, to just allow for wiring. We don't wanna put wiring underneath the pickleball courts in case there's work to be later done on it. For the purposes of the shade structure, it's the middle aisle, the north-south middle aisle will have, would have four shade structures. And again, as council has mentioned, you could select one, two, three, four, all or none.
Do you have a picture of that?
Yeah, so just, just so you can, so there's a sidewalk that's kind of in the middle, separating on your conceptual plan. There's a sidewalk. That sidewalk just continues on. That kind of changed some of the, we had to widen it a little bit in order to allow for the wiring underneath. The fourth structure is, is only really adjusted in that way by being added there. It doesn't really, it's not really associated with the PG&E. It just, it just changed the dimensions of the courts a little bit. Essentially, the shade structures go in a row, north to south, and the top space, it just, it has a shade structure option.
And that's on that main walkway with all four shades?
Yes, the north-south, north-south.
I myself, I don't see why, I mean, we're under budget if we do all four shades. And that's even with the contingency. I'm not sure why we would leave out a shade, even if we're under our budget.
Lewis, are you okay with that? I don't want to deny it and then have to wait.
Yeah, I understand. I just, you know, they're looking at the same concept that I'm looking at, which has the three on there, and I don't see where the fourth one is necessary. So, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Okay, let's, let's have a motion for the base, and then we'll come back on the shades. So, can someone make a motion to go forward with the 1.591,381.34?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to accept that.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to go with frontline general engineering bid for 1,591,381 and 34 cents for nine pickleball courts, and this would be Resolution 6863. This is without the bid alternatives. Anything else? Okay, so with that, it takes all three of us to agree on this, so all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that has passed.
So, the resolution will have to be modified to reflect what the vote is tonight.
And if there's a second motion, it'll be reflected?
It'll, the second motion then will be incorporated into the resolution if it, if it passes.
Okay.
Thank you. Clarification? Okay, now, I don't, it sounds like anybody wants to do lighting, so do we have a consensus for shading one, two, three, and four? Or one, two, and three? I do not wanna, Lewis, I have to take a vote and, and kill this for six months, so...
We might as well go, I'm going with four.
Okay, make that motion then.
I'll make the motion that we go with four. And we're still under, still under budget.
Okay, we have a motion by Lambert for Resolution 6863 to approve B1, B2, B3, B4 shades. Those are type one, two, and three, and four. On that resolution, do I have a second? Okay, the motion dies without a second. I don't wanna kill it, so I won't second it. So, do we have a motion, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion on the alternative bid to approve B1, B2, and B3 type shade structures.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Sorry, pickleball guys, but I'll second it for the three.
Okay, we have a motion, second for shade B1, B2, and B3. We can always bring this back at a later date now that we haven't denied a motion, and look at lighting and look at other shade structures if it fits into the budget. And we need a vote. So, we need a vote on those three, so we have a motion and a second. As stated, any further questions or comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Ayes have it. We have three shades. Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to item 7F, which is the construction widening improvement to Ortigalita and Pioneer Road signalization for better traffic flow and improvements. And with this, we'll go to our engineer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The, this item is to award a contract for the traffic signal at Ortigalita and Pioneer Road. This is a initial project of the culmination of a long process to develop a alternative route to Highway 152. Several years ago, the city embarked on a plan to improve the, the roadways to accommodate existing and planned use on Pioneer Road, as well as provide an east-west alternative to Highway 152 for the local community. The complete, the street plan for this was approved by council in January 2021, and which initiated the project to develop the complete streets from this alternative route from Ward Road all the way to 152. This is the beginning of that process, the initial project, which is the traffic signal and the widening of the intersection, adjusting all the utilities at Pioneer Road and Ortigalita. The, I'd be happy to ask any, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the historical context, background, as well as the financial structure of how we're gonna complete this work. We did prepare plans and specs through the firm of Mark Thomas and Associates. We took competitive bids, the results of which are presented in the council report, and we're recommending the award to AG Construction out of Clovis. And like I mentioned, Mr. Mayor and council, I'd be happy to take any questions on the background of the complete streets program for Pioneer, as well as the financial plan for this project.
Maybe you can, before I send it to Ms. Lewis, maybe you can explain what's happening exactly at that intersection, the lanes and what you're adding?
Yes, sir. They were, over the past year or so, we acquired the right-of-way acquisition for, on all four corners, which took a little more, over a year. The improvements are going to widen the road to accommodate four lanes in all directions, includes adjusting the water lines, storm drain lines, sewer lines, and of course, adding a traffic signal.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Bergson, have there been any modifications to this particular project since it was approved between the city and MCAG this year? Have there any been, any modifications?
No, ma'am. It's still the basic, basic plan. Of course, we've had to make some adjustments to fit the road correctly, adjust the utilities, but the basic concept is the same plan that MCAG approved.
Was there a request made for right-of-way in August of this year by the City of Los Angeles for an extension that had to go through Caltrans?
Yes.
Did that cause a delay in, in this project in any way?
It has not caused a delay, but we, we did have to do a little extra work to get the, the right-of-way pinned down.
Okay, because it's been brought to my attention that because of the late request that this did not make the Caltrans agenda, causing us to, you know, kind of be backed up here at the last minute, needing to approve this before the end of this, this annual year.
It's, we haven't had to, we don't have to go to Caltrans for an extension, provided we complete and award the contract this year. If we did not complete the award this year, then we would have to approach the state and ask them for an extension. But right now, we're, we're not at that point.
So, the different funding categories that are listed here in the agenda on page 47A, it talks about federal grants, which is the 3,990, and the transportation impact fees. When you, when you're speaking of federal grant, is, is that CMAC money that, that you're talking about there, which is money from federal highway administered by the state and then comes down through MCAG to give to us?
Yes, that's the federal grant that's authorized and administered by MK.
Okay, and then there's money being requested and added into this from wastewater capital from the city and water capital from the city. Could you explain to me how this relates to putting in this signalization? I don't quite understand that.
Yes, ma'am. The, the associated work with adjusting the, the storm drains and the water lines around the intersection are those costs. The wastewater capital also includes storm drain utility costs in there, and the engineer's estimate was about a little over $2 million to make the adjustment for the storm drains, and the water's a little over a million. So, that's why those costs, those were estimates, but that's why those allocations are being made from wastewater and water capital to adjust those utilities.
So, these funds are enterprise funds, so what you're seeing are appropriations signs of this, but within those signs, there are impact fee funds as well as fee-based funds that go for capital, capital reserve. And there's, there's a percentage that we're gonna attach to that on, on the cash side within the fund. This is showing the total appropriations needed that matches up with the engineer's.
So, basically, the water, the funds from wastewater and water capital... I guess I'm, I'm trying to relate this to, you know, putting in a, a signalization. And is it because there, is there certain pipes or something that has to go underneath? Okay, okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I, I think those are the questions that I have at this particular time. Thank you.
Thank you. I want, let's talk about the urgency of the funding and how much time we have to use it, or we lose it, things like that, okay? I think that's, that was brought to my attention, and I think that's a big deal.
Yes, I believe the, the federal grant portion is the one that's, was authorized several years ago to the city as part of this project, and they, if we don't proceed with this, we may have to go back to Caltrans and, or the State Transportation Commission and ask them for an extension.
And that's the largest funding piece?
Yes, sir.
That's the 3,990.
Yes, sir.
And this matches up with the Pioneer corridor that's been planned like two years ago?
Yes, sir.
All matches, it's all gonna...
Yes, sir. And just to inform the council, there will be other projects along Pioneer, this, this route coming in the future. This is the initial one. There'll be a lot more projects to widen and improve Pioneer improvement route.
Yeah, well, there's regional funds that are associated with Pioneer and MCAG, and of course, there's cyclical nature of both state and federal funds. So, as, as the construction starts, then as we get into a cadence of reimbursement for the remainder of the project.
Okay. Any further questions or comments to staff or the desire of the council?
Well, just a final comment, Mayor. And, and this is not a part of this agenda, but it's related to this whole project. It's, it's been on the books a lot longer than your date stated, and it was, it's still on the books for MCAG to be a four-lane corridor going from west to east. still on the books for MCAG to be a four-lane corridor going from west to east. So I, I think, you know, for me, it would be a good idea to get an update on where we are in regards to fulfilling this project with MCAG, perhaps having their director coming in, Mrs. Guzman, and explain to us where we are in this process. Because we have been in the past on the verge of losing money regarding this project, and if we're going to move this forward to get traffic off of Pioneer, um, I'm sorry, off the Chaco, then we need to know where we are in the steps. Because this was approved back in, I don't know, was it 2016, 17, somewhere in there? And there's not been a lot of movement on it, except to change it from four-lane to two-lane, but it's still on their books as a four-lane. So we need to be very clear how we're going to approach this, and how we're going to get monies from the state, from MCAG, or any other federal organization to move this project forward. So that, that's kind of the only comment I have on this.
Can, can, thank you.
Okay, so, I, I think Mr. Burston actually answered our question about, right now, we need to move forward with this to get our signalizations on each where. He did state that as we start this, then now, as we start getting to the process of getting a road and all that prepared, then there's going to be more, uh, coming back to council for the, those, along with it. But the main thing is now is get the signalizations and all the infrastructure upgraded underneath the ground to get it cred for that process. And if we don't move this forward tonight, then it's, it's a chance that we may lose that three-point, something like that.
Yeah, I think if we don't move on this tonight, and we have to go back...
It could be another five years.
Yeah, who knows how long it would take?
Yeah.
That's not a good thing.
My proposal.
And I just, I want to tell you too, because the first, my first meeting for MCAG is tomorrow, that I'm actually on the board now. Had very good relationship with the 12 years I was on MCAG before. I was chair a couple of times. We got a lot done, we found a lot of monies. They have a whole new staff, and I'm, I've been on the phone with them four or five times this week already, and emailing them. So I think, to Ms. Lewis's suggestion, I will probably have a lot of those answers, what's going on with Pioneer. Back in, the day before, it was the bypass, you know, on the north side of town, and now it's the Pioneer corridor. So anyway, with that, do we have a, a motion to move forward?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll make the motion to accept the resolution number, I can't see that.
6864.
6864. As read.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second for resolution 6864. Any further comments? Not hearing any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Thank you. Now, I need to open up a public hearing. If you, the public hearing is to receive comments, public comment, and consideration of accepting the development impact fee report, AB 1600, for fiscal year 2020 through 2024. If you challenge the proposal action as described in, in court, you will be limited to raising only those issues that you or someone else has raised in the public hearing, described herein to the written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. So at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anyone would like to speak on this very exciting public hearing on AB 1600, please come forward at this time. Okay, we have someone. Please state your name.
Kathy Ballard. I just have a, a question. I'm sure that when I see the report, I won't have any questions, so the public hearing prior to doesn't help me. If I could hear the report and then contact you guys if I have a question, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Then that's what I wanted to mention. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on AB 1600? We're going to describe it in a few minutes to you. Anyone? Going once, going twice? Public hearing is now closed, and we will move on to the report, and you're going to give that? Mr. Kuhn, it's all yours.
Yeah, so, um, a quick little presentation in terms of, of what's in the report. This is the development impact fee report, also known as an AB 1600 report. It's for the fiscal years, five years from fiscal year 20 to 24. It, it also has the activity for last fiscal year. This report gets, uh, needs to be filed before the end of the calendar year, which is what we're doing today. So, the California Government Code requires that the report have certain attributes, and these attributes are brief description of the fee, the amount of the fees, the beginning and ending balances of those fees, and what, what type of other fees have been collected or, and interest earned. It identifies the approximate, um, date in which the construction will begin for these improvements, mostly in, in the sense of, of, um, a five-year period. So if, if these funds are spent within a five-year period, the identification of, of certain projects aren't, aren't needed. Basically, a, a, a fund, a specific fund is established for each individual development, development impact fee, except for the enterprise funds, of which the, the funds are restricted as a restricted asset or restricted cash. Other than that, these all are in their, their own funds entirely. The description of these funds are, are as such, there's the fire facilities, which provides funding for the construction improvement of, of protection, fire protection facilities, of police facilities, which pretty much does the same thing for the police. Parks and Rec, which is, it provides for the funding and construction improvement of parks and recreational facilities within the city. Water facilities, these provide funding to implement improvements, key elements within the waste, sorry, the water system, the city's water system. And it, it basically mitigates the impact of new development that comes online and impacts the water system. Similarly, with the sewer facilities, except this, in this case, deals with the wastewater system. The storm drain is kind of a, a combination of sewer and stormwater because of how it, it infiltrates. But mostly, the stormwater facilities are for the, the purpose of constructing a, a central detention basin within the city. Then there's the traffic facilities, which is basically funds that are collected for the construction management and implementation of improving our transportation system, key elements within that being congestion. Currently, there's a, a change in legislation on the traffic side of things, but, um, right now, this fee is, the nexus is predicated off of the old, um, the old traffic impact calculations. Those, those will probably be changing here in the next year or so. There's a general governmental facilities fee, and that fee is a fee that is collected for the purpose of funding capital costs relating to basic general city facilities. And then there's a 3% administrative fee that is charged, and that is for the purpose of the administration requirements of accounting, collecting, remitting, and managing these The current fee schedule, development impact fee schedules are, are stated here. These are, um, these were approved at, at a nexus study December 2019, and that have increased based upon construction index changes each year annually. It's done, I believe, in April for, brings, that we bring that before council, and it's enacted and, and comes into effect July 1st each year. The annual activity for, um, for each of these areas are, are in this spreadsheet. Basically, it identifies the fees, the interest. The other fees collected are, are, could be a variety of funds, whether they be state, federal, or, um, local funds that go in here. And these, these are, are deposited in here for the purpose of, of matching the percentages needed to complete projects. So the way developer impact fees work is they're, except for parks, they're, they're not a one-to-one relationship. They have a, a percentage that can be applied to new development, but existing development pays for some of the impact as well. So, within this, it gives us what the beginning balance, and in this case, it's the fund, fund balance beginning, gives us the ending balances, and the activity is, is, is stated within the revenues and expenditures of this report, and that's for the annual basis. So, there's also schedules that go through and they do a, a five-year calculation. These five-year calculations within this report are, are done by each impact fee fund. Goes from fiscal year 20 through fiscal year 2024. And what this test does is, this five-year test is a first-in, first-out, um, test. So if you have a fee that is, that has been accumulating five years ago, and you spend it in five years from now, that fee is the first one to be, um, to, to be spent. And, and really, the, the main reason why any of these fees accumulate is because in most cases with capital projects, there needs to be an accumulation of funds in order to, to pay for the capital project, because capital projects are, are expensive in nature. Within this, the only fund that currently does not have deposits past the five years was the police facilities. All of the others actually had those. And what we're required to do on each fund is, is, is issue a finding per the, per the government code. So with the fire protection, um, there's a planned EOC station, and that's stated within the finding of the report. For Parks and Rec, there's a planned improvement to Colorado Park, and that's, that's stated within the report. On the water facility side of things, there's, there's a planned construction for well 16, and then there's also a chromium-6 treatment issue for the city's water system. Now, we're in process of, of completing master plans for both water and wastewater collections, and some of these findings may change down the road as those master plans become enacted. For sewer, there, uh, the finding was a, a planned wastewater treatment, planned rehabilitation and sewer lift station construction. For stormwater, there's a planned detention basin, traffic, there's a variety of, of planned intersection improvements, as well as the Pioneer widening. General government, there's a planned renovation of the, um, annex, which will become the Develop, Developmental Service Center, right? And then renovation of the city hall. And the 3% admin finding, we're in the process of, of implementing Tyler ERP system, so we are still, we still have some implementation and licensing costs associated with that, so those funds will be spent accordingly. The notes to this report are basically stating whether or not there's been any refunds to, we have to identify any refunds that were made to the developer, for any developer fees that, that we decided we weren't going to be able to utilize for any capital projects. Currently, there's been no, uh, no refunds to developers and no planned refunds to developers, because we've identified all, all of the funds and the costs associated with those funds. So that was a pretty real quick overview of this report. I'm happy to go through specific items within the report, or answer any questions that you may have regarding this report.
Okay, before I send it over to the council, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing again after you heard the report. If anybody has any comments on it now, you're welcome to come up. We'll still honor you, Kathy, for, if you had any questions.
The first question I had was, you said it's five years to spend. Is that to spend the total, or do you have to spend it, if here's the fifth year, and the next year you have to spend what was collected, or?
So if you have, if you, let's say you, you receive a fee in that first of five years, and you hold on to that for five years, right, a past five years, that deposit becomes over five years, so you have to identify, you have a finding to identify for that piece, where you're going to spend it, and, and when.
Only because I heard your, your comment about capital projects are expensive, so it's something that you would want to accumulate.
So, so, yes, these, these, so for instance, on, on water facilities, wastewater facilities, like the wastewater treatment plant would be a big, would be a big project. So you would accumulate funds in order to have the adequate amount of funds and funding to complete that project.
Okay, and my next question was, it's only for capital projects, not for maintenance?
Right, well, no, it's not for, for existing maintenance. So, so, but, but it can be for retrofit or for redoing an entire facility to bring...
Like Colorado Park.
Like, well, Colorado Park is basically just a site right now. Because the, the, the plans for that would make it an entirely new, new park, in, in essence, because the facilities will be completely different.
The re, the reason why I asked that is, if it's not something that's for maintenance, everyone has complained about Colorado Park being so poor for so long, and I thought, then why didn't we use some of these funds just to get rid of the roots that were soaked up or whatever? I didn't understand.
Well, no, you, you couldn't use it for that.
Okay.
No, no. So, so in this case, it's, we're, the, the, the plan and the conceptual plan for this is, is basically creating a, a new park.
Okay.
The, the park itself, the land itself, is, is basically a, a, going to be a blank slate. Everything's going to be moved around, and, and so in essence, per AB 1600, you are creating a brand-new facility.
A brand-new park, okay. And the fees that we charge the developers, is that based on our employees that are involved in doing that, or is it based out of San Francisco, Fresno, Sacramento? What, what's the, how do they figure out that dollar that they're charging?
So the nexus study that was done...
The nexus, that's what.
Uh, it, uh, identified all of the needs and attached a, a dollar amount to the different types of development, and how the different types of development would impact that. Every year, it's, it's on the construction index, right? Every year, the construction index, not CPI, but construction index changes, and we, and those fees adjust annually for that construction index.
Okay, because I've heard before that your construction index is done, I think Stacy told me, based on San Francisco.
That's the only, that's the only data points that we have for all, for all indexes.
Okay, now, my next...
It, it says San Francisco, but it incorporates basically northern, all, all the way from here, pretty far north. There's not, there's not a specific data point set up specifically for Los Banos.
Can we make our own?
No.
Bummer. Um, that was just, I didn't understand why I'm basing my fees in Los Banos on something that is probably a lot more expensive.
Yeah, I mean, it takes, it takes an average, so it, it's pretty, it's, it's pretty accurate, to be honest, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all the questions I had, because now I didn't know that you were going to let me come up here.
Well, I saved you a phone call.
You did, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else like to ask a question? Or make a comment, I should say?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tony Whitehurst. I, I, I'd like to ask a question about chromium-6. It's, it's a rather large bullet in the china shop when it comes to our water system. It's one of those items that varies from one area in our aquifer, in our basin area, from one community to the next. It's a tremendous amount of fluctuation. But I haven't heard... But I haven't heard anything about whether that, whether the plan that was originally designed or the bids that were originally gotten to meet the requirements of, whatever the requirements were. And what we could agree on, put us at about $90 million for chromium-6 in Los Banos. There's been some changes, there've been some reduction in the chromium-6 in our water. And I understand that the most recent, the most recent engineer-designed costs will run about $70 million. However, some of you will remember meetings we've had with the San Joaquin River Water Users Agency, all the exchange contractors, the input from CCID, Jared Martin, from the Exchange Contractors Users Agency headed by Chris White here in Los Banos, and also the San Joaquin Valley, no, it's the San Joaquin Delta Mendota Water Authority based here as well, 32 water agencies. And finally, Rick Ortega from the Grasslands and the Bureau. They got into the discussion about, with us, about our recharge efforts and how we could improve that and perhaps go way beyond improving and eliminating it by developing wastewater treatment, no, excuse me, stormwater drainage treatment, minimal treatment and recharge of that. I'd like to know if these things are being incorporated into the discussion of what our developer fees are going to be included. But in that discussion about storm drainage, we also were told and invited to participate with all of those agencies in a project, improving the quality and the handling of water from Los Banos Creek flowing into the valley along the west side of Los Banos and affecting all our western wells. And this, their assessment, their evaluation, and their, and their planning has been approved. And even the funding is significantly included in their, in their plans. They want us as a partner. And their, their understanding, their planning and results indicate that chromium-6 would be essentially eliminated in that plan by flowing water directly into our aquifer on the west side, and it would actually flush a tremendous amount of the chromium-6 out of our water supply. Now, we can say eliminate the problem, but that can never happen. But, not in a natural occurring element, but, but they remind me, within the last few days, all of those agencies, that the project is very real in terms of its tremendous reduction of chromium-6. I don't hear any of that coming back from, from the, from the studies or any reaction. And I'd like to get the city involved in that.
I think your question is in that the chromium-6 is in the.
Yeah, so, again, the impact fee is not going to pay for the elimination of chromium-6. There's not enough money there. But we're, there's a lot of discussion in earnest happening right now in regards to the compliance and the regulations requirement for chromium. Again, as we get a clearer picture on this and a number and an action plan, some of that's going to be baked into the water master plan, I'm assuming, which is going to become, and all of that will become apparent, of which the impact fee funds will be a part of the funding of chromium-6.
Six is going to be based on what your cost estimates are.
Right.
And, and if the estimate is $70 million, that's a significant amount of money to be covered.
You'd have to get a lot further than that.
But if it's a lot less than that.
With the government, the state government and everything.
Yeah, if it happens to be a lot less, I would suggest that those agencies come back to the table with us, where they started, and explain how much of that cost can be eliminated by, by the creek, before you, before you calculate the developer fees and take, and take tons and tons of slings and arrows coming your way with high fees, because they're going to come. But if you can find a significant reduction in the cost by this other project, they're just asking for our partnership, not for our money. And if you're, I think those questions should be answered before you calculate what the developer fee should be.
Sure.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry to take so long, but it's, I'd hate to see that effort lost.
Anyone else would like to speak?
I don't know if this is a proper, I'm uneducated in this one section. Is there any way or has, is it being planned with the developer impact fees and what we're talking about? Is there any way of, in the future, working the impact that we have with our animal population? I know I sound like a broken wheel, but the reason for it is that with the new housing that is coming in, some individuals forget to keep their cats and their dogs inside the home. And when they have them outside, or they let them outside before several weeks of being acquainted with their new neighborhood, they're running loose, they're getting lost, and that impacts the shelter, all in all. And so, if one day, if all of you can talk and figure out how we get some fees that are being extremely impacted to assist the shelter because of all the extra effort that they're doing.
It's a very good idea.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Before this, it's just basically to accept this report and accept the public hearing comments. And Ms. Lewis, you have a comment?
No comment, Mayor.
Okay, then if I could have a motion, please, and a second.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept, to receive the public com, I'm sorry, where am I? This is number eight, right?
Yes, 8A.
Okay, the public hearing, to receive a public comment and consider accepting the development impact report, AB 1600, for the fiscal year 2020 through 2024.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Any further comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed, eyes haven't, motion carried. I thank everyone that spoke. And now, we will move on to item number nine, consideration of the next steps in filing the Los Banos City Council member vacancies for District 2 and District 3. And we'll move to our city attorney, Mr. Bill Vaughn.
Thank you, Mayor, for those of you at home and in the audience. This is item nine, and there is a staff report. Prepare for it, and you can find that staff report at page 188 of your council packet. As a recap, at the last meeting of the city council, the council gave staff direction to proceed with an appointment process to fill the two vacancies, one in District 2 and one in District 3. You directed staff to get that process moving. Staff advertised in various social media, newspapers, in the, in the city's website of the vacancies with the applications available. And today at noon was the cutoff for submission of applications for both District 2 and District 3, for all of those interested in becoming a new councilman and my persons here to my left in the future. So, what we're trying to do tonight is we're going to do a couple of things. We're going to announce who those applicants are. Lucy's going to do that. And then, we're also going to ask the council to establish a date to proceed with the interviews and the actual appointments. And then, we have an interview process and a voting procedure prepared with your staff report as attachments. And we'd like confirmation that those are generally how you want to proceed. And when we get to that part of it, I'll kind of go through those in a little bit more detail. But I turn it over to Lucy at this point to announce the applicants for District 2 and District 3.
The applicants that the City Corps Office received for District 2 was Refugio Lamis, Evan Sanders, Abel Molina, and Cody Camacho. We did receive an application from Philip De Leon. And I checked with the Elections Department at Merced County, and he's not a resident of District 2. Even though he filled out a District 2 application, he's actually a resident of District 3. So, that would be something for you to consider. And then, the applications for District 3 we received were Rasmov Viveros, Marcus Chavez, Steven Nunes, Miguel Alejandra, Sybil Hallaron, and John Cates.
So, you have a lot of folks to consider for the interview process and the ultimate appointment. I think Lucy's asking for direction as to whether she can amend, Mr. De Leon, is that his name?
Or would you like him to resubmit an application? And all the applications are on the city's website with the agenda packet.
So, if you can give her direction as to whether it's okay to switch him to District 3, actually the district he's from.
Yes, he just.
I think it was a mistake on his part.
He thought he was District 2, and he's not.
I, I wouldn't be in favor of opening up the, the application, you know, allowing him to resubmit. I would be in favor of just moving him over to the right district if he wants to serve. I don't want to get in that way. I don't know, how does everybody else feel about that? Ms. Lewis, Ken? You okay? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Okay, your direction is to go ahead and just move over to that. You won't deny that, thank you guys.
So, given the number of applicants you have, I think I counted 10 or 11. If you go through an interview process by giving each of them five to 10 minutes to introduce themselves to you, answer a few questions, you're talking about an hour and a half, two-hour process just for that, and then the voting process to follow. So, you could be talking about a two-hour process to get through. And so, you may want to consider not doing that on a regular city council night, which the next one is January 2nd, and do it at a special meeting where that's the only thing that you have going on. Give you ample time to consider everybody and not be rushed with other items on your agenda. So, that's one of the things that we're asking tonight, is how you'd like to set that date. And if you have a date in mind as to when that would be. And like I said, currently, the next regular meeting is January 2nd, which is Thursday after New Year's. And that's a regular meeting, it already has agenda items on it. You can do it at that meeting if you like, or you could consider doing it at a special meeting where that's the only thing that you consider. So, that's one of the things that we're asking for direction for tonight. Also, as attachment one to your staff report, is the interview process that you used the last two times, or prior councils used, to interview applicants for vacant city council seats. And we just followed the format there, and we provided you with proposed interview questions that have been used in the past. And we just like a consensus as to whether or not the interview process seems appropriate. It would be interviewing each of the applicants at a public meeting on a date and time designated by you, each of them to be interviewed separately. The order of interviews will be chosen at random by lot. And then, each of the applicants would be afforded, in the past, they've been afforded 10 minutes to introduce themselves and to address the city council regarding their qualifications and answer some of these predetermined questions. And giving them a minute and a half, which in my experience is ample time for them to answer the questions. No, I don't think so either. So, it may not, it may not be as long and arduous as it might seem, but you may want to, you want to consider that in terms of when you set the meeting and that kind of thing. So, if there's any questions about the prior interview process or any changes you'd like to make, we'd like to vet that out now so that we can have that prepared for the meeting and so the applicants can be invited and they know what's going on and what's going to be expected of them.
I have a couple of things. Are we, so you want approval on these, these questions tonight that we're going to ask?
Maybe let's just zero in on the interview.
Okay.
What we'd like to do is allow the applicants to have a chance to see the questions in advance, so it's not just an on-the-spot question. So, if there are other questions we want to add to this, we can do that before we actually set the interview date.
And piled them all together. And there were duplicates.
So, what we'd like to do is focus on the, if the process seems reasonable.
I think, why don't you talk about, a little bit about the voting?
Okay, well, the voting is in your attachment too.
I want the people to hear what's going on.
Okay, so, once again, the voting must be done in public. Your votes must be announced in public as to who you're voting for or not voting for. And however, in order to, typically, it's done by ballot. So, you'll be given a ballot, a written ballot. And since there are three or more applicants, we're suggesting a ranking system where you would rank your top three choices, first, second, and third. And first choice would get three points, second choice would get two points, and the third choice would get one point. Those points would be tabulated, and the person who compiled the most points would be your selection. I've seen it done a couple of other different ways where you, when you have an applicant pool this big, as you do the ranking and you eliminate, you do it, you do it through a couple of rankings, and you eliminate some of the folks to begin with, and you whittle it down to one or two. But this, this seems to work fine. It's not infallible, though, and there is a chance that there could be a tie. And there's really no good way to break a tie other than to re-rank them again and continue that until something breaks through. You can break a tie by a random chance. I'm suggesting that you repeat the, repeat the ranking until a tie is broken. And it only really would apply to the top vote-getters. So, if you had more than one top vote-getters getting the same amount of votes, that's the tie that you're worried about having. And you can either repeat the process until rankings change, or you can, at that, at that meeting, you can decide another way to break the tie.
Would you eliminate those who did not receive a vote?
You could do that. That could be one way to break the tie, would be to eliminate those who did not receive a vote.
I think that's what we did last time.
And then, you would just rank the ones that received a vote to begin with. That, in that way, you've kind of broken a tie as well. So, the ranking works well for three or more applicants. The first choice where each of you vote on one applicant doesn't work as well because there's a real chance for a tie in that one when you have more than two applicants. So, I would suggest in both of these situations where you have five or more, it sounds like, applicants that you go with the ranking system.
It looks like we're going to have four in two and seven.
Seven in three, popular district. So, like I said, it's not infallible in the sense of a tie, but I think we can have something in process to give you the ability to break that tie.
So, if there is a tie, what you're suggesting is we just keep voting till somebody cracks?
Pretty much. Lucy has a good idea where you would eliminate the ones that didn't get any votes?
Well, I'm talking about it when we narrow down to like, maybe there's just three we're voting on.
Yeah, three's a, three's a bad number when there's only three voting.
Exactly, that's what I'm.
It's, it's when you get it down to two, then there's not going to be a tie. But when you got three and you have three people voting, there's, I, I could not figure out a way to rule out a tie. I think the ranking is the best way to avoid a tie, but it could happen. Just, I went through some of the permutations of how three people could vote for four different people, and there is a way that you can come up with a tie.
And Miss Lewis?
I think the, the only statement that I have is maybe to preview the questions and see if there are any changes that we would like to make as council members to eliminate or add and eliminate a few of the ones that we had when we did a previous interview.
Yeah, that's a good idea. I, I do think that the good idea applicants ask questions.
Yeah. Okay, and.
Or eliminate some of them?
Some, yeah, some of these, excuse me, some of these questions, well, like the downtown, is downtown healthy, successful? Everything can be better and everything could be worse.
So the questions are really designed not so much for the answer to the question, but for you to judge how they present themselves, how they, you know, those kinds of things. The, the questions aren't designed to have a right or wrong answer. It just gives you an opportunity to basically have a conversation with the applicant. Not so much how they answer the question or whether you agree with how they answered the question. So that's why, you know, you have like very neutral questions like, what's your favorite thing about Los Batos? I mean, there's no right or wrong answer about that. But it gives you some insight into your applicant, how they respond to you. So you can delete any of these questions that you would like, you can add questions. You can give us questions in the future before the interviews, just as long as we have time to present those to the applicants.
Yeah, let's, let's start with, is there any questions you want to remove from this, or is there any questions you want to add?
Uh, I, go ahead. So I, I'd like to remove one, but then I'd like to add one.
Okay, what would you like to?
You would like to remove one or one of them?
Remove one question.
Yeah, I'd like to remove one and then add one.
Oh, I thought you meant like the number one.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. No, I mean, I'm, I'm like the mayor, I don't see any relevant with number five is, that's that question. But I would like to add, trying to figure out how to, how to state this. There's got to be a way to. Why do you feel that we should pick you as a, a, a council member?
Does it have something like that on there? Yeah. Miss Lewis?
Well, with that, with your, your added question, that could probably be incorporated with question number six. Because it says, what do you hope to accomplish as a council representative?
I, I thought about that too, but.
And, and maybe you can add that on and to the question.
Possibly, if you can figure out.
Why do you want to, you know, be a council member and what, what would you like to represent in your district?
Yeah, that makes sense. Is everybody else, you're fine with all the other questions?
Do you each want to ask two questions, or are you going to ask more than two, like it says? Each council member shall ask two questions. Are you sticking to that, or are you going to ask more than two? Last time, obviously, there was four, we were only filling one seat.
So I would like to keep it down to two.
So is question, question number two necessary? What is your favorite thing about Los Batos? I mean, I don't know that that's necessary to ask. So I, I'd like to see that one eliminated.
Remember what Bill said, a lot of it is just how they answer it, not so much the question.
Yeah.
I'm going to put us all on the spot. I'm going to ask each one of you what you want to see in the next council person. I think people that are watching at home that aren't here that applied, the people that are here that applied, and I'll start, I'll start. I think what's important, and this is what I'm looking for, is an independent thinker that's willing to change their mind, listen to the rest of the council and staff. So they have, they're open-minded and no agenda. That's it. You're here to do what's best for Los Batos, and I know you all are. But I mean, I've seen it when I pick people for, in the past, for planning. It's, it turns into, we're going this way, we're going that way. You have to really have a broad look at everything. If it's Ken's district, the other districts have to realize what you need and be open-minded and, and get your mind changed up here. You listen to a public hearing, and maybe someone giving a testimony or something, that public hearing can change our minds. I know most of us come in knowing how we're going to vote on stuff because we're all human. But I love it when somebody changes my mind.
I, I like that. But that's where my question that I was trying to get on here was kind of going. I don't want to give them the, because right now you're just, you're trying to tell, we're trying to give them an answer now to it. And that's what they're going, we're, we're preloading them to tell us what we want to hear. I don't want that.
Okay.
I want my question to, to, when I ask that question, why do you feel that you deserve it?
Should be selected for a council.
I want to know what his, I, I, because, straight up, there's one person, only one person I know on this, on the, on the list. But I still want to feel, and I'm sure if they're going to be on, on this application, they're going to tell me what I'm looking for when I ask that question. Very good. I don't want to preload, I don't want to, and, but I like where you're going with that. But I don't want to preload them with what, because now they're going to be, that question, now, with the question that I know that I'm putting on there, at least now I know I'm going to get that, but their, their truth, honest opinion of what I'm.
Well, I, I think in the past, we've, we've, since I've been on council in, in prior years past, we've always pretty much had independent thinkers on council. We didn't always agree, but we could agree to come to some sort of consensus. And even though we're in districts now, we still have to work for the good of the city. And so we have to be mindful of what it takes to operate our city, what it takes to run our city. That's why we're elected, we have that responsibility. And so, yes, I, I'm looking for an independent-thinking person. But I'm also looking for a person who is going to be mindful of our city, our employees, our budgets, all parts of the aspect to, to run this city. And, you know, that's kind of what's important to me.
Okay, what else?
Which, which is perfect, that's exactly, but understanding, we, they don't know nothing about what, what goes on with our city. So this is what, once we put them in that location, are they willing to, you know, go to these facilities, the League of Cities, you know, to, to learn what our, what our, the actual role of a council and a mayor, what our roles are. But I see what they want to do for, you know, ask this question, then that's, but, but she's exactly right. We want those independent thinkers that are not.
League of Cities is twice a year?
Well, they'll get, so if they're elected and we put in a position, they'll actually get online?
There is a conference next month for the newly elected. And then there's an annual conference thereafter.
Okay, so that's the twice after the.
Yes.
That's two or three days. Any other, what else you need to know?
Well, so what I'm hearing is you want to eliminate question number two and question number five. And you want to add a question along the lines of Mr. Lambert's comments. Are you, are you good with that being the setup for the questions so that we can provide those to the?
That would be six questions, if I merged six and his new comment together.
Are you good with that as the questions we are going to preview to the applicants?
I'm fine with that, you're fine?
And that would be two questions per person?
Okay, we good with that?
Could we restate what the questions are that we're going to keep and the one that?
Okay, so as I understand, it's one, three, four, six, seven, and eight. And then we're going to merge Mr. Lambert's question with number six.
Yeah, why do you feel we should pick you as a council member? And are we sticking to the ten-minute intro?
Or less. Ten minutes is a little hard to talk.
Up to, it says up to ten minutes.
So I mean, you can speak.
I'll change it to less than ten minutes, not up to ten.
Ten minutes or less.
So then the other, only other thing in that process is to give us direction on when you would like to do this.
I sort of agree with a special meeting myself.
It would be in January, probably.
I, I did have a question, possibly for economic, the next following Wednesday. I know there's usually a commission meeting. Is there a meeting or?
So they're planning commission meetings on the second and third, fourth Wednesday of each month. So chambers would be, if you're, if she's having meetings, those would be blacked out. I don't know about.
The twenty-fifth is the fourth, so you're not having a meeting on that. When's your next planning commission meeting?
Christmas.
That's your next meeting, all right? That's the one I'm talking about, so that, uh, I mean, that would be an available date for me.
The eighth?
Is it a long?
Uh, you can do it earlier than the plan, the planning commission meets at six. You could do an afternoon meeting.
Or Stacy could do an alternate location, we've done that before.
Is there another date that we can choose other than a Wednesday?
So after that one, well, I mean, a Tuesday.
So what date, when are you, after what time are you not going to be? Okay, so I don't have my calendar with me because I keep a hardbook calendar.
Seventh is a Tuesday?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, see, I'm not sure where I am on the sixth or the seventh, but I do know I have the third available. That's the day after our council meeting, and I don't know if.
So, so the problem I have on that is I'm not available for that pretty much a week anyway.
Okay, yeah, that's what you said first, yeah. So he's not available till his second week. So it'd have to be.
What if we keep the agenda super light for the second? Just do consent agenda items, no?
Or how about the ninth or the tenth? Are you available there?
I think we got to do a special meeting. We got a lot of work to do. We got to look at closed sessions and a bunch of stuff.
So one of the other alternatives would be for Lucy to coordinate you communicating with her and just pick the date that way when you all have your calendars and.
Yeah, let's just do that. How, does the eighth work good for you or not?
I'm good with the eighth.
Eighth?
I, I, right after that date is.
So let's tentatively plan for the eighth, we'll check our calendars if it's a problem. And then you can make sure everybody, all the applicants know what the date is. And then what time of day do you want to have this? Do you want to have it?
Any, any time of the day, that is, in the afternoon, if we're able to do the evening.
Well, the only thing I'm thinking about, if some of the applicants have jobs and they're working during the day.
Six o'clock is a good.
Yeah, we'll do six.
If we're having, typically we have evening interviews, it, it would be kind of unfair to ask them to take off their job.
Six o'clock.
Yeah.
So we'll plan six.
Do you want it televised?
Absolutely.
So we'll have to arrange to have Abel. Have to arrange to have Abel here.
And that's tentatively the eighth, you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, so you're having Stacy move her meeting?
So we'll, we'll go with that and we'll confirm that with you. If it becomes a problem for some reason we're not seeing now, we'll coordinate with you for a new date. So that takes care of the interview process, the questions. I outlined the voting procedure. I, if you want, I can come up with a couple, well, maybe another procedure to break the tie that I can present to you at the beginning of that meeting on the eighth.
Or on the second.
Or on the second, we could do it on the second, yeah.
Let's do that, because you, you got to change that around before you take.
Okay, so on the second, I can tweak the voting procedure for you, and you can firm up how you want to proceed with that one. Obviously, number one's not going to work.
Okay, so there was no action then?
No, you're just giving us direction.
Direction, and you'll come back on the second.
Do you have everything that you need, Lucy?
I think so.
We will, we will be posting the names on the website.
They're already on the website.
They're already on there, so, no secret. And again, the.
And their applications too.
And their applications. I, I think we've presented all of you with an application as well, with their applications. And just make it clear this will all be done in a public meeting in a public setting. There'll be no going behind the door and voting, it's, it's going to be all done.
And I, I don't think any of us have seen the, we've seen the blank applications and we've seen the names, but I haven't seen any applications, anything that anybody wrote.
I emailed it to you earlier after twelve, yes, and they're on the website.
And they're posted on the website, correct?
They're with the agenda packet, they're there with the agenda packet.
So any, anybody from the public can look at the, the applications and the applicant list.
They're redacted without the personal information.
And we'll post the questions as well, once we, we'll try to get those out tomorrow.
That was part of my email, I can do that for you, if you'd like hard copies, I can print those for you.
Okay, so we have, direction has been received by, by council.
Okay.
And we're going to bring it back for the next meeting as an.
On the second, one more shot at tweaking it if we need to.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time and effort.
You're fine, okay. So we will now move on to item ten is a consideration appointment to LAFCO. This is a local agency formation commission. What this commission's all about, it's a county commission that looks at the boundaries of the cities and water districts within the county. And there's a, I think it was actually the mayor of Dos Palos way back came up with a system of rotating council members of the six cities in and out, and then being an alternate, and then the supervisors on there also. So I've been on LAFCO for, I think I was alternate for two years, I was chair for one. So consideration appointment to LAFCO. Thank you, Ken. We have a nomination, any further nominations?
A second motion.
Okay, we have a first and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, ayes have it, thank you very much. Next thing is advertising, advertisement of public notices, and there's no report for this item. So we will move on to our city manager's report. Mr. Panero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. I just want to highlight the things that we had going on this past weekend. We had our movie night at the fire station, I think it was quite a success. We had over one hundred and fifty-plus people, if I'm not mistaken, that were there. So thank you to the, all the folks that showed up and were able to enjoy that. Understand they had a really good time and had some little raffle prizes that they were able to give away. So good work to the team that put that together. I believe this week, the fire truck is going around, drive around to different neighborhoods online with Santa Claus in there. So if you'd like to see Santa Claus in the fire truck, feel free to go take a look at the, I think, Facebook page of the Fire Department. Has that information there to see where Santa's at. Also, we had breakfast with Santa this past weekend, it was quite a bit of a success, a lot going on. Thank you to all of you folks that showed up. Those are really exciting events that we like to put on for the community, it's a lot of fun. Also, our Christmas parade, another great turnout, thank you for everybody that participated in putting that together. All the hard work that gets put into that. and putting that together, all the hard work that gets put into that. We also had another one of our drone light shows there as well, that was another exciting thing that we were able to put on for the community. And then tomorrow, we have Hot Cocoa with the Popo, and I believe it starts at 6 o'clock, if I'm not mistaken, that will be held at the Henry Miller Plaza, so if you'd like hot cocoa, you can go hang with.
The Popo.
The Popo. So that'll be tomorrow at 6 o'clock, so look forward to seeing you folks out there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And let's see. Now, our next is our report on Merced County Association of Governments, Peninsula Clean Energy, Measure V Committee, and San Joaquin Valley Air. Ms. Lewis, let's start with you with Valley Air.
Thank you, Mayor. My meeting is tomorrow, so I'll have a report at our next regular meeting.
Okay, thank you. And let's see, Peninsula Clean Air, the meeting is, do you have something again? Oh, okay. The meeting is tomorrow night, Merced County Association of Governments, the meeting is also tomorrow during the day. I've had a lot of discussion with the executive director of MCAG, haven't been to a meeting yet, and I talked to her about what's gonna be going on on Highway 152 and the Pacheco Pass and the raising of the highway because of the raising of the dam. So lots of times the state, this, this is a state federal project, has nothing to do with Los Banos, but I, and she agreed with me, and, and she's gonna make sure that our area gets noticed what's going on. Hopefully, we'll have a public hearing or a public open session that you can ask questions about how they're gonna do it, when they're gonna do it, how long it's gonna take. We don't have any of those answers right now, so I'm gonna just hopefully get some of those answers so we know what's going on with that, because as you know, it seems like the last couple of years, traffic has been terrible on that Pacheco Pass during the commuting hours, and I can imagine if it goes down to one lane what it's gonna be like. So hopefully, maybe they'll work in the middle of the night, who knows what they're gonna do, but we're on it, so we're gonna find out more about that. Okay, and that's all I have to say about that. We'll move on to council members' reports, and we'll start with member Louis.
Thank you, Mayor. And I wanna thank the mayor for being available to ride in the Christmas parade, we had a good time this year. We had a few mishaps with our fire truck, the old engine didn't wanna ride anymore for this parade, but the fire department provided one of their, their older trucks for us, and we had a good time. And, and it's just nice to be there for the community and let them know that the City of Los Banos, City Council is there for them and to work for the city and make things move forward. I also attended breakfast with Santa, as always, in the 12 years I've done this, it's, it's a wonderful event. I really enjoy serving the, the community who comes, comes out with their children, and everybody loves to wear their favorite sports outfits, and there could be a little bantering back and forth with the community about which sports team is better than the other, so it's, it's a lot of fun. And our Parks and Recreation staff are excellent cooks, they did a really wonderful job in pushing out the breakfasts this year, and so thank you, Joe, for your staff and the wonderful job that they do. We had our San Joaquin Valley League of Cities Regional Meeting last week, and it, Stephen Qualls, who has been the leader for our division for the last 17 years, is retiring as of the end of this year, so someone new will be coming on to take his place, but he's done a wonderful job for helping raise money through golf tournaments and various things to keep funding in the organization for our division, and to have sponsors help raise money for the division. He does very well in keeping us on board with whatever legislation is coming down when we have our meetings, and also giving a detailed report of the finances that the district has in its account, which I brought the report with me, oh, here it is. One of the bills that was, that went through the Senate was SB 1164, postpones property tax collections on ADU for 15 years. That died, but it was amended to 10 years, so that means that communities won't be able to collect taxes on ADUs for 10 years. I, I think that's a travesty, because that's a dwelling that's in our community using resource and asset, assets, and so they should be paying taxes, but maybe in the future, something might change on that. In regards to the, their budget, and I'll just give the ending numbers, the deposit was $18,163.80. Disbursements were $16,901.73, and with all the additional monies, the ending balance of the account was $23,924.33, which was roughly about $1,000 and some change over the beginning balance. So the money has been managed well in, in our regional district. My son came down to the swearing-in at our meeting, our last meeting, and I, he came when I was first installed in 2012, and I didn't acknowledge my son, and I told him to stay online a little bit longer tonight, because I wanna thank him for coming down and supporting me, and supporting me in, you know, all the things that I've attempted to do in regards to my time in, on the city council and on the air board. It, it means a lot to me. He's the only relative that I have in this area, and I'm just grateful to him. So Charles, if you're still online, thank you sweetheart for coming, and I wish you a Merry Christmas, and he's leaving tomorrow to go to Hawaii for a couple of days to see a basketball game of his god, goddaughter, so be safe going, and I, I hope you get back home safely so I can see you. To our staff and to the community, I wanna wish everyone a very Merry Christmas. Thank you all for the work that you've done for the city this year. And to our community, I, again, I wish you a Merry Christmas and a very safe New Year. I look forward to working with everybody in the upcoming years, and I look forward to the accomplishments that we're gonna make for our city. That's it, thank you, Mayor.
Albert?
I just want, definitely thank the staff, all the department heads, they, they've done actually a wonderful year this year, getting us to where we're at now. And definitely thank them tonight, you guys were here with a lot of questions, good job on all the questions that you guys answered for us. You know, kinda, the pickleball, you know, felt strongly about that, but you know, hopefully, you know, later down the road, we can get the rest, rest of everything input. But then, I, just like Ms. Lewis said, you know, I wanna wish everybody Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and next year looks bright and shiny already, so appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, I'm glad we're doing a, a special meeting for the appointment, because we have a lot of work to do, and like we said earlier, we're gonna be bringing in some closed sessions about labor negotiations, that'll take up a lot of time, probably. I wanna be, I'm gonna, I mean, reviewing council policies that have been changed since I was mayor way back when, that was changed, some of them were changed in 2006 and seven and, no, eight, I think, some of them. And one of the things is I wanna look at in the future, we'll bring it up, is how we now, to put a thing on the agenda, we have to ask for it, and it gets put on the next agenda, if it should be put on the agenda, then we vote on it, then it gets put on a future agenda. I know government is made to run slow, but that, that's just too much for me. So I'm gonna request that we, that usually, the way it works is the mayor can request an item to be put on the agenda, talk with the city manager when it's appropriate to put it, depending on staff time and all that stuff. Council members have other things they wanna put on, they talk to the mayor about it and stuff like that. Now, if a council member wants to put something on the agenda and no one else wants it, then it has to go through that process. That's how school boards work, that's how most cities work, and I'd like to go back to that, just to save time, because it could be six weeks before an item that somebody wants to put on the agenda could make it to the agenda. So that's how we'll be looking at those things in the future, with the help of our city manager and our, our legal counsel. Also, I wanna thank staff for their work and all the city employees this year. I've been here for two weeks, so, so far, the first two weeks have been really good, and expect a lot more coming, a lot of, a lot of good work out of everyone in the next coming year. Our next meeting's January 2nd, because the first is a, is a holiday, and that's a Wednesday, so our next meeting's actually on a Thursday, and then we'll probably be coming back, most likely around the eighth, for that special meeting to appoint. I wanna wish, I'd like, like to thank everybody that attended the open house, our 28th year of doing the open house, and thank staff again for all the work they did decorating council chambers and city hall, they have a beautiful tree out there, and all the goodies that they had for the public. We had our open house from 4:30 till 6:00, and then the meeting started. Thank you all for that, and I wanna wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. This meeting's adjourned.